Welcome to Perspectives Online and on air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Blanigan. This program using the Zoom platform, as we typically do, was pre-recorded on Tuesday, September 29th for playback on Thursday, October 1st, the show appearing both on WFSU FM and also on the WFSU Public Media Facebook page. This program, the fourth in our series of political perspectives ahead of the November 3rd general election in Leon County. So far, our conversations have included the candidates vying for two different Leon County commission seats, and today, the one remaining undecided Tallahassee City Commission race is in the offing. Next week, we'll talk about the proposed local referendum creating a taxpayer-supported Children's Services Council for Leon County. And today's political perspectives, as we mentioned, features the two candidates for Tallahassee City Commission seat two. Since 2014, the person occupying that seat has been Curtis Richardson. He previously served eight years representing House District Eight in the Florida Legislature, and also served on the Leon County School Board. His opponent, Bill Shack, the Food Services Director at the Carney Center, and he previously ran for the commission back in 2018. By luck of that random draw before the program, we'll start with Mr. Richardson. And we'll start with a couple individual questions, folks, and then we'll veer off into some general city of Tallahassee-type topics that we all can get into discussing. But for you, sir, what do you consider to be the most important accomplishments? You can do like a top three or top five here since you first occupied the seat, and what are the primary issues that you'd like to address if the voters give you another term? Go ahead.
Well, Tom, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. Always enjoy being on air with you, and glad you all have had us here today to discuss the issues facing our wonderful city. As you mentioned, I have been proud to serve the citizens of Tallahassee on the commission since 2014. I've served with honesty, integrity, and ethically. Some of the major things that I think we've accomplished, Tom, in the time that I've been on the commission, we have passed some of the strongest ethics laws, if not the strongest ethics ordinance in the state of Florida. As you know, we had some issues with previous commissioners, and so we felt that we needed to make sure that the community knew that we were serious about ethics and ethics reform, and we passed that ethics ordinance as a commission and are serious about ethics in the city of Tallahassee. We have also established an Inspector General position, which will serve a similar function but not overlap with the Independent Ethics Board and its independent ethics officer. We have made ethics a part of the culture of the city of Tallahassee. In order for an individual to receive a pay increase, they have to demonstrate that they have taken annual ethics training. And so, we're serious about ethics and our expectations for our employees and elected officials throughout the city of Tallahassee. So I consider that one of my major accomplishments since being on the board. The other is certainly how we've responded to this virus pandemic. It has had a tremendous negative impact on our economy, but we were able to pass a balanced budget as a city without raising taxes, and we have been able to help our citizens, especially our business owners. We set aside $1 million to go towards assisting our small businesses that were waiting for the CARES money to come down from the federal government. We also provided $1 million for our not-for-profit sector to help them make it through this pandemic. And then through the CRA, our Community Redevelopment Agency, we included another $250,000 for small minority and women-owned businesses in our CRA. And then thirdly, Tom, I would say what we've done to improve minority or neighborhoods in predominantly African-American communities, including Bond, South City, and Frenchtown, and Providence. We have invested millions of dollars in those neighborhoods for infrastructure improvements, for landscaping, streetscaping, sidewalks, road improvements, housing, low and moderate income housing in those neighborhoods. We've addressed issues of crime in the neighborhoods, working with the neighborhood leaders and incorporating that into their Neighborhood First Plan. So we've accomplished a lot. There is still a lot to be done, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on the commission and the city staff and neighborhood leaders and business and community leaders throughout our wonderful city to keep Tallahassee moving forward and in the right direction.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shack, your turn here. What are some things that you would want to address if you are elected to the job now being held by Mr. Richardson? What would you do?
Well, number one, we need to act on the promises we keep making. We've made promises in this community for decades, in the very areas that Commissioner Richardson's talking about, and we still have a lot to do. And yet, he admits we have a lot to do, but we need to actually act on what we've promised. And I think that's number one. We absolutely are at a point now where COVID-19 and what we do in the future is going to dictate a lot of the next year or so, if not two years. And I don't ever hear a plan at one of the city commission meetings. We need to have a plan now on how we're going to help small business, how we're going to help people in the community get, you know, made whole again. And it's going to take a really big effort to do that. And I don't know that we have a plan. It seems to me this commission's been very reactive and not proactive, and I think we need to get really serious about some of the issues that face this community in the next year or two. So those are two things that we need. And then the third, obviously, is we're going to have to change the dynamic of this city and how we work with our police and how we do policing, how we work with our nonprofit community to help with things that we talk about every two years during election time, mental health, and building up communities. These things are going to be very, very important. So we're going to have to really focus on those particular issues. But I think crime, the number one issue in this community, needs to be actually treated like it is the number one issue in this community, because I believe crime dictates a lot for our community, whether it's economic growth, jobs, and just certainly creating safer neighborhoods for our kids. So I think we're going to have to really focus on that first.
Okay, you've set a really nice table here for a subject that everyone can talk about here, starting with you, Bill, since you mentioned it first, and that is the law enforcement issue. You have a number, and someone suggested a growing number of people in this community that are taking exception to the way that Chief Revel has been working since he took over the Tallahassee Police Department, even to the extent of saying that Chief Revel needs to be fired and replaced. You have, however, on social media expressed a great deal of support for the chief, and at the same time, you say there need to be changes. Would that also include perhaps the city manager? Talk about those for a moment, if you would.
Sure, sure. I think that's, again, the number one issue in my campaign is public safety and crime and addressing it. And Chief Revel plays a very big part of that. However, I do believe that as someone who's run restaurants his entire career and ran operations my entire career, until you have the tools to do the job, it's really difficult to do what is expected of you. And I believe that Chief Revel has not gotten all the tools that he needs to do the job. In fact, I argue all the time that I believe the Tallahassee Police Department has been defunded for many, many years because we've gotten rid of many programs that worked in the past. We've never caught up to our staffing levels that have to be increased based on people that are retiring. We're never getting the amount of recruits that we need to replace those people. So once again, until you give someone the tools that they need to do the job, all we've done is delay a new facility that has been needed for the past 10 years. So and again, all we continue to do is delay that. I think having a new facility will push the morale into being a Tallahassee police officer. Right now, no one wants to be a Tallahassee police officer, and could you blame them? I don't think you can. However, if we give Chief Revel all the tools he needs. Now, that's not to take Chief Revel off the hook. If it was me on the city commission, I would be pushing for two meetings a month with crime being the topic every single week, every single two weeks, and having the chief of police in front of the commission talking to us about what we're doing this week to solve crime in this community. And we're not doing that. We need to start being laser-focused on crime and what we're doing with gang problems and what we're doing with the racial tension in this community, and I don't think we're doing that. So number one, I'll support Chief Revel. However, I don't support the city manager because of the process we took to get Chief Revel. I think that process was flawed from the start. None of the city commissioners held, city manager owed responsible for the emails that went back and forth, the way he tried to strong-arm Chief Gilliam, and to Gilliam's credit, he said, "No, thank you. That's not the way I'm going to operate." So the fact that we have Chief Revel and all the commissioners saying, "This is our guy," is so disingenuous, and every time I hear that, it really angers me even more because Chief Revel wasn't their guy. And yet, now they think he's their guy, and I think that's really disingenuous. But the bottom line is, when we hire a new city manager, which is the motion I'm going to make on my first day on the dais is to have the city manager get fired, is when that new city manager comes in, which myself and whoever else on the commission's going to be able to hire, if that new city manager thinks what we've done in 2020 requires a chief to be replaced, guess what? That's his call. But as of right now, I believe we need to give Chief Revel all the tools he needs to do the job, and we haven't done that.
Okay, very good. Mr. Richardson, your take then, again, on law enforcement and city management in Tallahassee with all that continuous criticism coming down on both of those individuals.
Well, Tom, I would say that what Mr. Shack says may sound good, but it's impractical. We have, since I've been on the commission, we have made crime a number one issue for the commission and for our police department. We realize that. We're citizens in this community. I live on the south side of town. I've had crimes happen within yards of my front door. I'm certainly committed personally, as well as an elected official, to making sure that wherever a citizen lives in this community, they can assure that their neighborhood is going to be safe, their business is going to be safe. We've made that a number one priority. We've put financial resources into the police department for Chief Revel to be able to hire the officers that he needs. A lot of times, that's a recruitment issue, because we don't have a lot of people going into the police academy right now. But we are working very hard to address that issue. We have given the police department the technology that they need, and we are in the process of building a new facility, a state-of-the-art facility for our police department. That doesn't happen overnight, regardless of what Mr. Shack has to say about that. That's a process that you have to go through, and we're addressing that. We have made a number of reforms in the police department. I think Chief Revel is doing a good job. He has started a citizen police academy to be a communication link between the police department and the community to hear what citizens in the community have to say about our police department and policing in the community in general. He has a youth citizen advisory committee. Just recently, the city commission adopted a citizen review board, a compilation of best practices of citizen review boards from throughout the state of Florida, and we've adopted that here in Tallahassee. We've made policy changes in the police department. We no longer allow chokeholds and no-knock warrants. And so, we are making changes because we've heard what the citizens have said. They said that black lives matter. I agree with that. I've been black for almost 64 years now, and I know that their black lives do matter. All lives matter, but all lives can't matter until black lives matter, and we're moving in that direction to bring this community together so that we, wherever you live in the city of Tallahassee, you can feel like your neighborhood is safe. Crime is one of our number one issues and will continue to be over the next four years. I'm also committed to the issue of net zero carbon emissions. We have passed, working with some of our environmental groups, we passed a resolution to be carbon neutral by the year 2050. We're hoping to reach that goal prior to that. But that certainly is our goal, so that we can reduce or eliminate our carbon footprint and preserve our environment for generations to come. And then lastly, Tom, we're working with our neighborhoods to make sure that as we grow, that that growth doesn't encroach on those neighborhoods, that it's compatible with our neighborhoods, and that's been important. So we're listening to our citizens, and we're moving this community forward in lockstep with what we hear from the citizens that we represent.
Before we transition away from the public safety aspect of all this, should we say, a contemporary challenge for law enforcement, which we saw just this past week out at the 10 apartments on Dixie Drive, where we have large gatherings of people, these pop-up parties, if you will. And as local law enforcement moves to handle those, they're not exactly getting a whole bunch of backing from the governor of Florida, Governor DeSantis even proposing sort of a college student bill of rights, essentially, you know, "Hey, you're only young ones. Let the kids party and have a good time." How do you, as a commissioner, starting with you, Mr. Richardson, advise the city manager who in turns advised the chief? How do you handle this stuff?
Well, this, Tom, this was an issue that we discussed at our last city commission meeting, when it was brought up to us. Again, as I mentioned, just a few weeks ago, there was a shooting at a service station less than a mile from my home. That was one of the first instances that we were made aware of these pop-up parties in parking lots, and we have aggressively pursued those. We just heard of another one this past weekend at South Monroe and Orange Avenue. And so, we have taken this seriously. We discussed an emergency ordinance that would give our law enforcement officials, our collective, our law enforcement collective, because they are all working in concert to address the crime issue, the public safety issue in our community. We were going to pass an emergency ordinance that would give the police department, our law enforcement collective, more authority over these pop-up parties. But now, with the Republican governor saying that, you know, the executive order is no longer in place, that really ties our hands. I talked with the city manager this morning about that, and we're trying to still determine how we're going to handle that. It's taxing our police department staff and financial resources, because these things are popping up all over town, 12 in a weekend in some instances. And we're having to bring in additional staff in order to handle that. But it is an issue. We're working with the business community because they play a part in allowing this to happen on their property. But it's a community issue, and we're all going to have to work on this together to address it, and we're committed to doing that as a city. And our police department is doing a great job at this point, but there's still a lot we need to do, especially when it can have an impact on the spread of this COVID virus. We've seen that at Florida State University, and again, when it creates violence and shootings in our neighborhoods and on our streets.
And that is certainly Mr. Shack of no surprise to you, your place of employment, the Carney Center, a lot of things in that area there, being on that 32304 and south side border area that you are. How do you suggest that TPD and other law enforcement handle these sorts of things?
Well, it's certainly very difficult to ask TPD to do that. However, the city commission did the right thing and created an ordinance to try to be able to use what they can and their resources to try and break these parties up. The reality is, is something that you pointed out, the Carney Center, what they did to mitigate COVID-19 and protect the community was to move everybody out of that facility and put them in private, you know, separate living quarters, which works. So maybe as great as the county has done educating and putting up billboards, maybe we need to do some sort of education and some kind of marketing to let college students know that being in these large groups are absolutely something they shouldn't do. However, they are college students. It's really tough to do, and not just college students gathering together. There's many other people in the community gathering together. So I don't know what else we can do besides an ordinance, but, you know, it certainly is something that the, I don't feel for TPD having to deal with that, but it is something we're going to have to address. I, you know, my sense about COVID-19 and where we are, you know, my sense is that we need to get this community open. We need to get our city open. I think we've done a really good job in Leon County, and especially, you know, during this pandemic, as opposed to other places in Florida. So the curb is definitely flattened. I mean, if that was the original intent of this, is to flatten the curb, you can look at all the models you want. The curb is flat. And I don't disagree with getting this community open. But I think, again, personal responsibility, business responsibility, businesses have a role. They need to make sure they control those crowds. All the restaurants are allowed to be open. They can dictate how they're going to treat, you know, their business, whether they're going to allow people to come in with masks or not, whether they're going to practice social distancing. We believe, and I believe that we know enough about it now to safely open up restaurants, so I'm all for that. And but it's up to the business owners themselves to decide. And then it's up to us as guests and consumers to decide whether I want to go visit that restaurant if their policy is not having people wear masks, or if you, you know, have to, or social distance, can only have a few tables open in your restaurant. I think there still needs to be personal responsibility with this disease, and a very unfortunate disease, but there is personal responsibility in how you protect yourself, how you protect your family, and how you protect others in the community. And if wearing masks and social distance and visiting places that, you know, don't go in big groups is the way you do it, then I think everyone needs to have some personal responsibility and do it the way they feel is necessary.
Thank you. Much more to come on our discussion. The two contenders vying for Tallahassee City Commission seat two, we just heard from the challenger, Bill Shack, the longtime incumbent Curtis Richardson, also part of our discussion. Some dates to keep in mind for the upcoming general election in Leon County. Vote-by-mail ballots are now in the hands of nearly all of the voters who have requested them. If you have not received yours yet, and you did get on that list requesting a mail ballot, get up with our supervisor of elections, Mark Early. He's tracking that stuff on a daily basis. The deadline for voter registration is October 5. Early voting will commence on October 19th, and early voting locations are also posted on the Supervisor of Elections website. General Election Day is Tuesday, November 3. It'll be interesting to see how many folks really vote in person on Election Day with all the other options that we now have for casting a ballot in this upcoming race and the special situation we have with COVID and the preponderance of vote-by-mail and all that. Anyway, back to our discussion. Economic development and addressing income disparities. Let's flip our order. Bill Shack, if you can talk about that a little bit. Again, that 32304, that has been certainly acknowledged as having the highest income deficiency in the entire state of Florida. Being at the Carney Center, you see this stuff just about every day, even though those folks are now in apartments and hotels and all that thing. How do you get jobs? Do you bring them in from the outside? Do you use some of the resources we have in the community to develop more entrepreneurship? How do you handle that? How do you get people back to work if their traditional work has disappeared?
Well, once again, we're going to have to have a plan, and I think we need to come up with it soon, because this is going to end soon, and we're going to have to come up with a plan. And it's not necessarily just 32304, but it's all over our city. The issues in 32304, again, I talk about it being an embarrassment that our city has that distinction, and we can make all the excuses we want. It's a lot of college students, all this stuff. But, you know, I read the article just like everyone else about how people who live in 32304, some of them have to take two buses just to get to a medical appointment. We need to build and put structures in place and infrastructure and bring some economic opportunity for people in those areas. And yet, this still is a topic every couple of years when people run for office. It's time to stop talking about it, and it's time to actually bring some action to it, whether it's to get that grocery store that's still not in that area built, you know, get those medical facilities there, get some, improve the way of life for people in that area so that they don't have to take two buses to get to a medical appointment. Those are things that we have to actually do, and yet, it can't just be something we continue to talk about. So number one, we got to bring economic opportunity in those areas. And, you know, I heard a discussion today about, you know, the jobs that were created over at the Canopy Development. Well, if we can get something built on in 32304, bring some development there, we'll create some jobs and create some opportunity for people. But the bottom line is, we can't continue to just talk about it. Once again, I heard a discussion today about how people got together to talk about affordable housing and how we're going to solve these things. But we keep talking. We keep talking. Let's act and actually get it done. I think it's time, well past time, to actually do something. So let's just get there.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, your thoughts on that score, sir?
Well, I think it's clear, Tom, that Mr. Shack has no idea what's going on in the city of Tallahassee, because all of the issues that he just raised, we are addressing. We have contracts with the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium and Habitat for Humanity to build houses and homes for those that are in need of low-income and moderate housing. We're about to redevelop the Orange Avenue Apartments to the tune of millions of dollars. That's going to be transformational for the south side of Tallahassee. Yeah, I was a part of the original Blueprint Committee. I served on the Sales Tax Committee, and unlike the original Blueprint Committee, this time around, we dedicated 12% of the revenue that will come in from that sales tax increase over the next 20 years to economic development. We created the Office of Economic Vitality, and their job is to work with our local chambers of commerce and our business community to both grow our local small businesses, those that are interested in growing and being able to hire additional staff, and also to recruit business and industry to our community. And so, the Office of Economic Vitality is doing a great job in that respect, and we hope to be able to create those private-sector jobs, because we've depended too much on state government jobs in the past, and those jobs are now disappearing. They're not paying the employees much. I think in the last 12 years or so, state employees have only had one or two across-the-board pay raises, and so their salaries aren't even keeping pace with inflation. So we're trying to expand our private-sector base and work with our colleges and universities to develop an employment pipeline so that we can have the jobs here available for the young people that are graduating from our colleges, from our college and universities, rather than them having to go to other larger cities or leave Tallahassee to find employment that will allow them to take care of themselves and a family and pay back those student loans. Tom, we're working to provide those jobs right here in Tallahassee. We've got incubators like Domi Station that works with individuals who are interested in becoming entrepreneurs and starting their own businesses, and we're seeing those businesses start to grow in Tallahassee. And so, that's an asset. Again, we are doing lots of things to create jobs in our community. That's going to be even more important after we come through this pandemic, because so many jobs have been lost. We've lost a number of businesses, major retailers, that have left the area. So we're going to have to make sure that we have jobs available for those individuals. We're going to have to work with our college and Lively Technical College to create training opportunities in the career and technical fields so that people can, and those are very great options for people, Tom. I retired from Lively, and I can tell you, there are lots of opportunities, both at Lively and at Tallahassee Community College, for individuals who are interested in training in the career and technical fields that pay very good salaries in the construction trades and electricity and HVAC, nursing, welding, where a kid can get one year of training in a welding program and make $100,000 a year. So we're working very hard to make those opportunities available, not only for our young people in the community, but those who have lost jobs as a result of this pandemic. And that's going to be one of our top priorities over the next four years, is creating jobs and growing economic development in this community.
One major loss of jobs, though, is located right behind the courthouse on that Washington Square property. As of a year ago- As of a year ago, this past summer, of course, the big hotel project, uh, the plug was essentially pulled on that, a disagreement over essentially the neighboring parking garage. And Mr. Richardson, how do you get that back on track? Wait for another developer to come along and say, oh, that looks like a good deal or tear it all down, start it. What do you do?
Well, Tom, as you may or may not know, that is private property. Uh, and the project was begun. We were able to work through all of the issues that present, prevented them from continuing with the project. Uh, and I'm not sure quite right now where the owner is in terms of their willingness to continue with the project. Certainly, we won't want something like that sitting uh in downtown Tallahassee. And so uh, we're, we're willing, more than willing to come back to the table and work with them. No city funds have been expended on that project at all. Uh, and so we're hoping that they will come back to the table and, and look at how they can begin to move that project forward again. But again, it is private property. It's a private development and no city funds have been expended. Uh, we were able to work out all of the issues that uh brought the project to a halt. And so again, we're just hoping that they will begin to move forward. It will be definitely an asset for downtown Tallahassee if we're able to uh bring them back in here and get that project completed.
Beyond what Mr. Richardson said, Bill, why, do you have any thoughts there? Send out an, an all points bulletin, try to locate the, the owner of the property or let her sit. What, what do you think?
No, I just don't think it was really, uh, you know, I don't think it was beneficial to our city to see cranes waving in the breeze for three months. Um, you know, somebody didn't ask the right questions during that process. Somebody didn't ask the right questions about the uh, uh, the easement and the parking and uh the relationship to what, what we had with that project. I, I don't know that the city has not been engaged at all financially with that project, but uh, uh, with regard to taxes or anything like that. But anyway, uh, back to one of the questions, you said, thi- this is what, what earlier, if I can, uh, he, he mentioned that I just don't know what's going on. But what, what I do know is this, is that we have state workers in the, in, in Tallahassee who don't even live in Tallahassee and, and have to drive from other places. Why? Because they can't find affordable housing. We have college students, yeah, we want to keep them Tallahassee. But the reason why they don't stay is just because no, there's no affordable housing. What we continue to do is build $2,000 a month apartments near Cascades Park, thinking that we're gonna have graduates that graduate from school and stay in Tallahassee to our 18-hour downtown at Cascades for $2,000 a month. That's just not gonna happen. So we're not building $2,000 a month apartments in Cascades Park, destroying 200-year-old oaks to build these things so we can keep college students here. We're building it for our, for the lobbyists and all the other people who, who come to Tallahassee and try and, you know, manipulate our, 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 our state uh and our city. So uh, you know, we talk about what, what we're doing and the promises we're making. Again, uh, what, what Commissioner Richardson talked about, we're again, promises and we're not doing it. We haven't done it yet. Nothing's happened. There's no ground being tilled right now. Plans are great, but until we actually do it, uh, we can't continue to talk about all the money we're spending in these areas. I think we need to reevaluate blueprint as a whole and see where, where we're at, reevaluate our projects and start going into the areas of town that have been promised things for decades and start doing that now. Uh, again, let's be proactive instead of uh, you know, how do we not know right now what's gonna go on at Washington Square? How's a sitting city commissioner not know what's going on at Washington Square? I, I, I just think that's, that, that's really strange to me. Oh, I don't know the answer. But Commissioner Richardson should know the answer to what's happening with that project that's right down the street from City Hall. That, that's just my opinion about that. But uh, again, uh, he said earlier that things just don't happen overnight. Well, when you continue to delay it and delay it and delay it, you're absolutely right. Things aren't gonna happen overnight and this city commission continues to delay projects instead of moving forward on them. And I think that, that's, that's a real, real good distinction to make.
Okay, a name check brings an opportunity for response. Mr. Richardson.
Well, again, Bill simply does not know what this commission has done. We have been very aggressive in terms of uh responsible and planned growth in our community. Uh, I can't know what's going on with people's private property. Uh, that's their decision to make. Uh, we're, we've reached out to them. Uh, I know that the city commit, the city manager has reached out to them and uh have tried to get an idea of what their future plans are. But I can't know what a private property owner uh plans for their, their own property. Uh, but we're gonna work with, we're gonna continue to work with them on that. We are addressing the housing issue in our community. I've talked about initiatives that we've got going. By the end of this year, we will have built 13 houses, 13 homes for families uh in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. We have a partnership with uh Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. It's called a Community Land Grant. Where property that the city owns, we're dedicating to uh the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium to build affordable and low-income housing for individuals uh in those uh low-income neighborhoods, predominantly African-American neighborhoods. That's happening as we speak. Uh, so it's not just a plan. These things are happening. Uh, we are working right now, there's a linear park, a $300,000 linear park being built uh, uh, in the Bond community to link that community to the St. Mark's Trail. I mentioned uh what's happening in, on uh in South City with the Orange Avenue Apartments. We've got in the works now, which will come online in a couple of years, a $5 million Star Metro transfer facility at the intersection of Orange Avenue and South Meridian. That's gonna be transformational for that community. We are putting in uh infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, water and wastewater infrastructure. That's occurring, Tom, as we speak. That's not just a plan. That's happening now. There are sidewalks on Putnam Drive and on Pope Drive and will soon be on Texas, where those didn't exist when I came to the commission six years ago. We just approved $12 million for refurbishments at the Leon County Fairgrounds uh to make that more of an amenity for our community on the South Side. Those things are happening. I've advocated for the winding of Orange Avenue. We are about to put a new fire station on Lake Bradford Road to serve uh Western Tallahassee and the South Side of town. These are projects that are in the works that I have advocated for uh as a commissioner uh and have gotten the support of the CRA board and uh my colleagues on the city commission to make those things happen. So they're not just plans, they are happening. You can see development happening all over this community. And uh apparently Mr. Shack has not visited other parts of the community other than where he lives up in the Northeast. But I'm all over this community all the time and I see the development that's occurring, planned and responsible development. Uh, and that's what I'm proud of and the direction that we're going uh as a city.
Okay, and again, Mr. Shack, you can respond there since you were brought up in that conversation.
He loves to say my name, which is pretty cool. But uh, you know, the, the CRA gave money to Washington Square. Um, so I, I know that's not exactly the city, but the people who sit on the CRA board are city commissioners. So i- in my mind, I think people would argue that the city did have an involvement in Washington Square. So you know, we, we need to be honest in what we're saying sometimes. And uh, you know, the, the Commissioner Richardson likes to take credit for what the commission does as a whole. But uh, you know, he, he started this day talking about ethics and how important it was to him. But he was the only no vote on the city commission when it came to stronger language. So the commission as a whole passed stronger ethics, but Commissioner Richardson was the only no vote on the stronger language. So for him to sit here and talk about ethics as if this was his number one priority as a city commissioner uh i- is totally false because he was the only vote that said, no, I don't want to have stronger language in it. Now, the commission voted to have stronger language, but it wasn't his vote. Of course, he'll take credit for the entire commission, but I think that is so disingenuous. It's the same thing as his mailer that went out this week claiming that the $8.8 million in relief for Tallahassee citizens was his responsibility and his vote only. I think that is again, one of the biggest lies in the history of Tallahassee politics. For him to take credit for the COVID-19 response and the $8.8 million that helped residents of Tallahassee, that for him to take credit is again, uh, uh, I'm not a politician, but I, I don't believe that's how you win an election, is to take credit for something the entire commission did. Yet it's convenient for some things, but not convenient for others. He didn't see any corruption on the city commission, but, but he sat there. But he sat there and, and, and was a part of the $8.8 million help residents. Again, this is just a fantasy that Commissioner Richardson lives in. And that's what happens when you, when you, when you're in office for so long. You tend to forget who the people are you work for and you just continue to work for the developers that are throwing $30,000 in a pack for you to win. Okay? So I know that's what I'm up against, but let's just get to the facts here. Okay? Uh, Commissioner Richardson doesn't work for the people anymore. He works for the developers and it's time for him to go into full retirement.
Mr. Richardson, you returned the volley, sir.
Well, Tom, I, I, I don't know that any of that deserves a response. I mentioned to you that none of the city funds, which include CRA funds, have gone towards the Washington Square project. Uh, I have served this community honorably, ethically, morally, uh, with integrity. Uh, and, and it, and it is demonstrated uh in the number of elections that I've won and the margins that I've won those elections. We passed an ethics ordinance and it was a five-zero vote to pass that ethics ordinance. When we established a, uh, an inspector general, that was a five-zero vote. Uh, so I don't know what uh Mr. Shack is, where he's getting his information from, but clearly it's misinformation. Uh, he doesn't know what I've done over the years that I've served this community in a number of capacities, both in elected office uh and in my volunteer capacities. I've served this community uh to move this community forward and to ensure that wherever an individual lives in the city of Tallahassee, they can feel that this is an all-America city. Uh, that has been a goal of mine. Uh, uh, and I've worked with my colleagues uh to make resources available during this pandemic for our small businesses, uh, for our nonprofit organizations. Uh, the 250,000 that we made available through the CRA uh with the consent of the CRA board, the full board, uh, to make that money available for small minority and women-owned businesses within the CRA district. Those are the kinds of things that we are accomplishing uh as a commission. Uh, our commitment to be carbon neutral by the year 2050. Our commitment for planned and responsible growth for infield development, for redeveloping and revitalizing those neighborhoods that have been long neglected in the city of Tallahassee. Those are the things that I have worked for and championed uh as a city commissioner. Uh, and that's what my uh, uh, goal will be uh in the next four years, working with my colleagues, the mayor, uh, and the other commissioners on the city commission. And I look forward uh to those, uh, the things that we've accomplished thus far uh and where we're going uh as a community.
Just a few moments remaining here, folks, but before we uh, uh, wrap it up, uh, Mr. Richardson, you're, since we're talking about affordable housing and development and all that sort of thing, your thoughts on Walani, which is certainly, I know, 10, 15 years out, but still one of the most controversial uh proposed developments we have had in this town in quite some time. Your take on that, sir, please.
Well, I, I'm not so sure it's controversial at this point. Uh, Tom, we know that this community uh has to grow. If we're not growing, we're dying as a community. Uh, and Tallahassee is growing. Our population is projected to grow uh over the next several years and decades and we've gotta be prepared for that growth. Tom, this Walani development is something that's been talked about probably for the last 30 years. Uh, and so now we're looking at how we can begin to prepare for the growth we know is coming. Walani is probably the last large tract of land uh in Tallahassee and Leon County where we will be able to accommodate growth. But again, I keep making uh issue of the fact that the growth has got to be uh planned and it's got to be responsible. I was the one that, that made the motion uh to slow down where we were going with that Walani development in terms of the comprehensive plan amendments that were being proposed because I was hearing from citizens that although we were headed in the right direction with our comprehensive plan amendments, there was still work to do. And so I, I, I took that motion to my uh colleagues on the city commission and, and we were able to slow down that process. And now we're continuing to work with uh those stakeholders and community groups uh that want to work with us to move growth and development forward in our community. And so that's where we are now uh with the uh Walani development. Uh, we're taking input, we're hearing from our citizens and we hope to come up with a comprehensive plan that is second to none for how we address uh issues of housing uh as that, and not just uh, uh, multi-million dollar homes, but homes that will accommodate uh low-income families and moderate-income housing uh for families. How we will address uh education issues, making property available for schools. How will we address infrastructure issues, water and wastewater uh retention? Those are the kinds of issues that we're dealing with now to make that a stellar uh comprehensive plan amendment and development for our community. The reverse of that is, or conversely with that, we've gotta make sure that we do infield development properly. We don't want all of the development to occur in the North and Northeast. We want to do infield development within our in uh urban services area. Uh, and there are pla- patches of land uh within neighborhoods in that urban services area that can and will be developed so that we have even development across the community. Uh, and we can see growth and prosperity throughout our community, including areas like the 32304 zip code area.
Very good, sir. Yeah, and you get the, the same uh opportunity to talk about Walani too, Mr. Shack. Go ahead.
Well, uh, thanks for the question. I, I live in Kalan Estates and uh, you know, the proposed road to go right through uh, half a mile from my house uh was something that uh, uh, that's one of the issues that a lot of people have a problem with. Um, and then last month, they sprung uh that they want to put another road uh connecting to Centerville Road, which was never part of the original plans because I was there during the, on the board uh during the original uh discussion about that road. Um, but more than that, i- it's not about development, it's not about, we've never even caught up from the development that happened so fast in the Northeast and all the other areas of town like Kalan Lakes and Golden Eagle. Those are two-lane roads that these, these projects go into. So uh, we've never even, you know, had the, the sense to try and figure out a way to say, solve traffic problems, not create more of them. Uh, you know, Centerville's a two-lane road and it's a canopy road, so it's protected. And we're gonna bring in two more roads from the canopy development. The problem with the canopy development that everybody has a problem with is that Commissioner Richardson and the other commissioners approved the clear cutting of that entire uh, you know, area uh allowed, allowed Gazvini to violate environmental uh laws and they didn't hold them accountable. The state had to step in. But uh, you know, when, when that's your main donor uh for your campaign, uh, it's really difficult to really stay focused on what's important. And uh, you know, the problem with, with the citizens is during this time of Zoom meetings, uh, citizens felt like they didn't have a say, they didn't really uh have a chance to, to get involved. And I'm sure the commission will talk about all the charrettes that went on and the information that happened during there. But the bottom line is that vote was delayed because Commissioner Richardson was told to delay it or else he's not gonna get votes by a group of people. And um, and, and he can laugh, but that's the truth. And uh,
Bill, you, you, you are shameful.
I'm not shameful. I'm telling the truth. And then maybe you should try that sometime, sir. Because it was not a 5-0 vote on that ethics vote, it was a 4-1.
It was a 5-0 vote, Mr. Shack. You go back and check the minutes of that meeting.
Have your people watch my Facebook page and I'll post the 5-0, the 4-1 vote. Okay. Um, but you know, I'm not against growth, but uh, we, we gotta make sure we're doing it responsibly and having some balance and, and attacking uh neighborhoods that have been there forever like Kalan Estates and basically uh destroying the way of life that we're gonna have in that neighborhood by bringing in new roads is not the way to do it. And uh, I don't know the other plans. It's going to happen. We're gonna have a road come through there. But uh, you know, uh, this commission approved the $6, $7 million for that road. Uh, it, it's just something that I think we need to slow down on. Again, I said we need to reevaluate blueprint. I think we absolutely have to do that and start going into the areas that need it. Um, and uh, sure, Walani might have a big tract of land that, that we're gonna need down the road. And it's nice to say 30 years down the road, nothing's happening right now. But right now, we're gonna have a neighborhood, Kalan Estates, that has more traffic and possibility of some safety issues in the future and that's gonna happen. And that was approved by this commission.
Okay, gentlemen, we have to get into the elevator and do our final pitch here because we are just about out of time for the discussion. Back to our original order. Mr. Richardson, again, Washington, in about a minute, sir, please. Uh, the voters of Tallahassee retain you on the city commission, please.
Well, Tom, again, I have served this community well. Uh, I have been honored to serve this community, the entire community uh and to listen to our citizens. this community, the entire community, and to listen to our citizens and to put in place those things that they have told us they want to see happen in our community. I've worked well with my colleagues on the commission, with staff, and we're prepared to move this community forward. We're listening to our citizens. There is no way to, we've gone through, the citizens have approved the projects in Blueprint, and now it is up to us to implement those projects as over 60% of the citizens who voted for Blueprint to go forward have done. We've done a good job. I feel good about the work that we've done and how we're moving forward. And so, I look forward to the next four years continuing to move Tallahassee forward and have her be the all-America city that she has been twice designated to be.
Thank you, sir. And for you, Mr. Shaq, your best pitch in a minute, please.
The best pitch is, we just need some new leadership on the city commission. Commissioner Richardson's done an incredible job during his career, but it's just time to have a new vision on the city commission, one that does not view the citizens of Tallahassee from the top, but someone who views them from an even level like I do. I'm hands-on in the community every single day, working to improve people's lives. Before the Carney Center, I was working to help the intellectually disabled have a better life, which is something I'm still involved with every single day. And when you're involved in the things that I'm involved in, you get to see that we can do so much more, but it takes funding, it takes resources, it takes a commitment to actually doing these things. And the citizens of Tallahassee are screaming for change. They are screaming for someone who's just like them, working with them in partnership, in collaboration, to improve neighborhoods, improve our entire city, and to move our community forward. And that includes, you know, improving our policing and our schools and all the other things that we need to have happen. That's why they're engaged. That's why citizens are demanding their politicians listen to them. Just go look on social media, the amount of posts and Zoom meetings that people have together, basically talking about the issues with politicians not around. They're talking about them because they want to get on those calls with those city commissioners and have three minutes to say, this is wrong, this is what we need to do. There's never been engagement like there has been before. So, in the year 2020, it's time to elect somebody brand-new, someone closest to the people. That's what we need in Tallahassee right now, and I'm that candidate. I've been doing it for years, I've been involved in so much, it's just an extension of what I've been doing my entire career. This won't be a different change for me. I'll get along with all the commissioners, just like Commissioner Richardson will. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to do that.
The challenger, Bill Shaq, the incumbent, Curtis Richardson. Gentlemen, good luck in the election upcoming November 3, and thank you for participating in our political perspectives.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Perspectives produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee. Taylor Cox, Paul Dam, Amy Diaz de Villegas, Devin Bitner, Tricia Moynihan, and Lydo Rawls helping out. Our director of content, Kim Kelling, keeping the bus in the middle of the road. And I'm Tom Flanagan. Our next political perspectives on Thursday, October 8, a discussion of the local referendum on a taxpayer-supported Children's Services Council for Leon County. We invite you to join us then for another political perspectives from WFSU Public Media. Take care.